Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, seeing no special reports, approval of the minutes.
No move.
Second. Approval in a second, on favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Audience comments, leave it five minutes, non-agenda items.
Steve Rens, eight thirty-eight, East McMurray Road. So I just wanted to bring up, so in 2020, you know, the Trump election, it was very contentious. A lot of signs disappeared, a lot of people's political signs disappeared from yards. In 2022, in the spring, it was a little bad. In the fall, we lost hundreds of signs, and mostly governor signs, a lot of, all Republicans were disappearing all over the place. Again, this spring, you know, we maybe put up a couple dozen signs only in people's yards, not on public property. We lost over a dozen signs. I lost four from in front of my house. So, you know, I think it's getting to a point here where this is getting a little out of hand. You know, we're talking hundreds of dollars worth of money now. This isn't just five bucks a sign. It's starting to get expensive, it's starting to get ridiculous. Now, this is our First Amendment free speech, this is what the First Amendment was made for, was for political speech. And, you know, this is restricting our political speech by these signs being taken down. I just wanted to ask if we can, some way that we can take this seriously this year. I know in the past, like, okay, you know, it's just people being, you know, being political, but this is getting, it's getting pretty bad now. It's almost, and it was, it was organized because all the signs disappeared in the night. So somebody drove around in the night, probably a couple people, and you know, it happened to me at one time, I just heard a car door slam on a car and ran up there and the sign was gone. So they pull up, jump out of the car, grab a sign, take off. You know, I'm just saying, I don't know how we can do it, but I was hoping that we could take it seriously because it's going to get really bad this year, I think. And I just want to bring it to your attention, maybe something the police can do, they can, you know, keep an eye on things, be on the lookout for this kind of stuff because it's going to get bad this fall. I just wanted to bring it up, so, thank you.
Appreciate the call.
My name is Peter McMillan, representing North Star Towers. We're here to get a dialogue going with the supervisors for the need for more wireless coverage in the community. Your zoning ordinance allows for towers in the industrial district. There already are towers up there along nineteen in the TAR self-storage area. That's really the only spot where towers are permitted. I think there's a pretty obvious need for coverage. So we're here to talk to the board and see if there's any ability to have a workshop with you to discuss ways that we can work together to provide more coverage within the community for wireless cell coverage. I did bring a few handouts for you, if you don't mind me, and I won't take up too much of the time. This will be.
Thanks.
Cell phones now aren't just for driving down the road, right? People are using them in their homes, this is how people live. This is, there's a stat in this handout, eighty percent of all nine-one-one calls now come from a cellular phone.
Not out of my house, because you can't get.
Thank you.
Is this the first time you've, you know, come to...
Well, we've had a few meetings with Mr. Lauer to review the zoning ordinance, so now we're here to sort of make another plea to see if there's... I have two more.
I have. I don't get left behind, so.
So, yeah, we've met with Mr.
I just want to correct something. What you're saying is only partially correct. The fact of the matter is, you can have towers in Peterstown, Chip, they need to be co-located. That's...
Well, that's antennas, yes. Antennas can be co-located on existing structures.
Yes.
So I think we're here to specifically see if there's any flexibility for an actual tower that would encompass more than one carrier potentially, that would, you know, solve more than one carrier's problem.
Currently, with the towers that we have, what is the problem with co-locating with, say, the one in, like, Peterson Park?
Okay, well, the one in Peterson Park, I believe that's a brand-new one, correct? That, we did, me and Mr. Lauer about that one. These communication facilities need to have line of sight, right? So antennas has to see the next site down, the next site down. That's typically how you can drop a call. These sites triangulate, they go three different directions, it makes a honeycomb. If the site can't see the next site, then that's a drop call. So line of sight's very important. Over at the park, there was only going to be one tower, and we couldn't go above AT&amp;T and couldn't make another light standard for our own. So that really, there was no line of sight for...
But with regard to that tower, T-Mobile's approached us to be able to be on that tower.
And T-Mobile's line of sight might work for that, but for Verizon, each carrier's different. I'm not here to speak specifically, each carrier's needs are sort of, some generalities. But when we met with Mr. Lauer for Verizon, that particular elevation wouldn't work, we'd need to be higher for the sites.
And their AT&amp;T was the highest?
Yes, I believe so. At the time, that was maybe a year, year ago.
There's another opportunity in Peterswood Park to co-locate, and as we're all familiar with, up on Druid Drive, you can co-locate on those high-tension funds that are up there.
Yeah, so there's already two carriers. So the area of Druid Drive is covered, right?
No, no, what I'm saying is up in Peterswood Park, there's high tension, and people have looked at this before and not followed through, at the top of the hill, up where the picketing shelters are.
So the area that we've been looking at, you know, is where the majority of the traffic is, right? Which is Donaldson's Crossroads, which is nineteen. That's where a lot of your commerce is done, there's a lot of residential areas around that way. We had initially thought that maybe the fire hall, which is township-owned, would be something that we would hope that maybe you would want to have a discussion, or maybe you would have some other suggestions, we could look at those transmission lines. But we're just really here to open up a dialogue with the board, to see if there's any flexibility or anything we can do to address an obvious need in the community for more coverage.
Well, I don't think you'll find anybody on this council that's opposed to that. From what I understand, within ten years, landlines are probably going to be non-existent.
Well, I said, eighty percent of all, they come from a cellphone for nine-one-one calls, so.
I only have it for security purposes. Yeah.
So...
But we had an obvious issue with, like, the tornado, there was a ton of people, well, number one, I know that we're going to talk about it, but the emergency notification was lacking, but, you know, a lot of people don't have service in the area, and a lot of the schools don't have service, so any type of medical or any type of emergency, you can't get hold of anybody. And that concerns me with our school system, although we're not here to talk about any of the school properties, but that and a lot of the public areas, you can't have any, and even people's homes, there's not service. So I think there's a huge need, it's always been something of my interest, so.
So really, all we're here tonight is just to ask for, to start a dialogue, maybe have a workshop with any interested people representing the township, just to try to find a compromise. We want to, we want to work with you and be a partner in this, and try to provide more wireless coverage to the community.
But this is really a zoning issue, and probably what makes sense is to make this part of the consideration when we're looking at the comprehensive plan, because you're going to have to rezone properties to be able to accommodate those towers. And as we've had this discussion, I've had this discussion with all carriers, you know, the problem is, everybody recognizes that your cell phones don't work as well as you'd like them to. Nobody wants that tower next to their house. And so it's, it's not universally accepted placing these towers in, and I think it's, should be part of a thoughtful discussion about where they're going to be allowed in the community, because you're going to get a lot of input from anybody's new neighbors.
And I'll say, that's sort of how we landed on, at least as a jumping-off point, at the volunteer fire department over there by the middle school. There's, I mean, currently now, it's not zonable, but there's a nice buffer behind there, woods that would, you know, would block a lot of it.
That's all going to be gone. There's a proposal to develop that.
Well, more homes, more phones. So, you know, again, and if that's not the spot, again, help us find one that works for everybody.
And have you talked to the school district in general?
So the school is something that we had explored. I did reach out, the meeting we had, Mr. Lauer, the finance, the chief financial officer was there. I did reach out to the school and had not heard back. That would certainly, if the school is interested, that we would be more than happy to talk with them.
Was it you, Tom, that was saying that Upper St. Clair?
They have a tower right on their stadium.
All, yeah, the three major carriers are all there, they've been there for twenty-plus years. That's one of the first projects I worked on when I got into the industry.
Does anyone in Upper St. Clair have a tail? Yeah?
I don't live in Upper St. Clair, but I haven't heard of anything. But, yeah, those antennas have been there for a long, long time.
Yeah.
No, I really appreciate you coming to start this dialogue, and I think we'd be happy to do something.
Yeah, I don't think we should wait until we start dealing with the comprehensive plan. I agree. We should start on this right now, we can fold it into the comprehensive plan, but, because we're looking, we're looking at next year for the comprehensive plan, right?
We'll be starting it this year.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, then we should schedule a workshop, and let's see if we can get started on this.
My question is, you made no sentences relative to the type of installation that is currently out in front of the middle school.
The small cell?
It's on a tower, an existing pole, and I don't understand why there's been, you know, no further effort to promote that type installation in the community.
So, well, there are some small cells in the community, those are not to replace cell towers, those are there to support cell towers. The easiest way that I can explain that is that it's capacity, 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 right? Back in the old days, when it was just flip phones, and it was just a call or a text, the technology would carry a lot further, right? It's not a phone anymore, it's a computer, right? And the more data you carry, the more antennas that you need. The small cells won't go away, they work in conjunction with the cell sites to provide more capacity, because everybody's taking pictures and videos, streaming movies, more data, more antennas. That's just...
Like a booster?
It's the reality. So, yeah.
Just pick some of the higher points of this community, and to have those type facilities at those high points has to be an improvement over the piss-poor coverage we have in this community right now.
That's right, we're happy to workshop and come and get a dialogue so we can improve it.
I guess what I'd be interested in seeing is, have you guys ever done a study or anything that would show where you would have to put towers in this township in order to cover the entire township?
Well, so, again, multiple carriers, right? There's the big three, also Dish Network is starting to become a player, and so, can you hire a third-party radio frequency consultant who would sort of give you a generality? Yes, absolutely, there's firms out there that do that. With us in the tower industry, we kind of already, you know, sort of know that as well. Again, I keep, I'll go back to the fire department, not ideal, like, right, that would not solve all our coverage problems, but it's, it's a jumping-off point that I think would at least solve two-thirds of the problem, at least for that area.
Well, if you were to look at page twelve of this handout that you have here.
Yes, sir.
I would have to tell you, this community, when we went through this evolution twenty-five years ago, would never consider a guide or a self-supported tower like those images.
Yeah, and again, that's what we're, we're not here to say we're building this tower X or tower, you know, we're, you know, monopoles, that's what you have at the TAR storage center on nineteen, you know, that's probably your least intrusive type of tower that would, and certainly in a highly developed area like this, they couldn't put a guide tower anywhere near here, just takes up too much space. The guide towers are for rural communities.
I just want to introduce myself really quick, Jesse Stiles, president of North Star Towers. I want to address that question very briefly. With regard to small cells, small cells require, they only operate when they have macros, macro cell sites, whether it's a tower or antennas on a water tank building, and they have fiber loops that actually physically go back to that macro. So without macro cell sites, you don't have small cells. If we were to try to replace the coverage footprint, say, or capacity footprint of one macro, you could be looking at ten, fifteen, twenty small cells to achieve the same thing. So each individual community needs to weigh what they value more. Is having all three carriers putting their own small cells all through a community make more sense than having one macro or two macros to perhaps take that place? I think that's the kind of dialogue we'd like to have with you guys and discuss what tools are in the toolbox, and also know that small cells only see five hundred meters max. The power output's very low, the signal frequency is very high, so they transfer a lot of data throughput, but they don't cover a very large footprint. So it really, maybe it's a blend is the right answer, but we feel that we really, we feel strongly that we need to try to explore a macro solution as best as possible.
Well, the downside side of 5G is its projected distance compared to the 4G.
So it's a great point. So first-generation 1G went way back, before even I got in the industry, twenty-five years ago. I know in Cleveland, where I'm based, we'd work all through the region, but in Cleveland, the predecessor of one of the original cell companies, GT MobileNet, they launched the Cleveland market with twenty-eight sites. That same carrier in its current iteration has over six hundred in the Cleveland market. So you're seeing even the same footprint that an old site used to serve is now being replaced by four, sometimes five, new macros, because the frequency, to your point, as it's gone from first, second, third, fourth, and fifth generation, each site sees a smaller geographic footprint, but the upshot is, your phone, your handset does more stuff. So the trade-off is, each site covers a smaller geographic area, but under that umbrella, you get a lot better customer network experience. So that's really the balance, is how do we try to make that work best for the users? Does that make sense?
Follow.
That's why the big tall towers are no longer very often...
Does it make sense for the people that don't have any connectivity at all right now, versus something that could be extended more reasonably?
We are here to work closely with you on that. We would love a work session, whatever it takes, we want to do. We're not, we are not married to any one property or any one location, we have, you know, some geographic guidance from Verizon, but we, everything is open, we want full transparency, we want to work with you as best we possibly can. And I very much agree that if we're going to work with, looking at the ordinance or master plan, we strongly prefer to accelerate that outside of that process, because that can get bogged down. I've been involved with that in the past. I've done ordinance rewrites, I have multiple sites at municipalities, it can take years to get that done through that process. So we want to be respectful of your process, we want to work with you collaboratively, but we would like to try to speed this as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you put your name and address?
Absolutely.
On both, no, on those tablets.
On this one? Sure. Say it for the record.
Yes.
Jesse Stiles, Jesse Stiles, North Star Towers, eight-one-five Superior Avenue, Suite fourteen-twenty-five, Cleveland, Ohio, four-four-one-one-four.
Mr. Rens, you didn't put yours down.
Well, since we have the gentleman here, we should just try to schedule something, I think.
You know what, the only thing in fairness, they represent Verizon.
Understood.
AT&amp;T has an interest in this, T-Mobile has an interest in it, Crown Communications has an interest in it.
My company, we work for all the cell companies. This one, we happen to be working primarily for Verizon, is what's called the anchor tenant, so we build it for them, but we, I have leases with all the cell companies.
But they're, but the, as you guys have explained, the needs of those other carriers may be different, and the locations that work for them may be different.
Yes, but the FCC and case law is very clear that just because one licensed carrier in a specific geographic area has service, it doesn't mean that the others don't have a legal right to pursue the same level of service for their customers, even though the location would be different.
We just don't zone for one company, we zone...
Understood, we want, we want this to work for everybody, and we have those, I have those relationships, we all have those relationships, we have no problem trying to work collaboratively with other carriers, if that makes sense, but we are here primarily for one customer who has a very identified, specific, significant gap in their network.
Yeah, my house.
Let's not see.
Okay. And whose house?
Paul, we could just please have a follow-up.
Sure. Yeah, I have Mr. Lauer's contact, and it would just be best for me to reach out to him and schedule something.
He'll be in touch with us.
And then, I'm sorry, I'm Peter McMillan with Smart Link, representing North Star Towers, ten Church Circle, Annapolis, Maryland, two-one-four-one.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Any other audience comments?
No, but we exceeded the five minutes.
Yeah, I'm...
We wasted five minutes, but it doesn't matter.
I'm sorry, was there anybody else?
Yes, there was someone waiting right in front of this show.
You can use the microphone. You want to go to that podium, you can go to that podium.
This is Sorelli, I live at one-thirty Oakwood Road, I've lived there for thirty-four years. My concern is about the Old Oak development that's being proposed. Now, this might not be the correct first venue for me to speak at, but last week, I understand there was a zoning hearing meeting, but I found out about it after, after the meeting. My concern is traffic. I don't know if there'll be a traffic study done, because on Oakwood Road, I've lived there for thirty-four years, and traffic has really gone up a lot, has really increased a lot there. So my concern is traffic, and this new development that's being proposed on the corner of Old Oak and Route nineteen has an access only on Old Oak Road, and my concern is people are going to use Oakwood Road and Old Oak as a cut-through because they do it now.
Well, that was at the zoning hearing board meeting last week. That development is proposed required two variances, council took a position in opposition to the variances, and both of those variances were turned down. So as of right now, there is not a development planned there. That doesn't mean it can't come back in some way, shape, or form, but as of right now, there is not a development proposal.
That's good to know, I didn't know that detail, but anyway, because of traffic on Old Oak, on Oakwood Road, I was wondering if the council could propose to add a stop sign, or even maybe a roundabout on Oakwood Road at Alexander Road. So a stop sign would be good, I don't think many people stop, but it could maybe influence the speeding a little bit.
Well, there's a stop sign coming down, if you're coming down Oakwood towards Alexander, there's a stop sign there, right?
No, there's no stop sign in Alexander.
There's just a stop sign, just on Alexander.
There, if you want to get from Alexander to Oakwood, there's stop signs, but there's no four-way stop signs.
Right, right.
Now, there's, there's speed bumps which people fly over.
And go airborne.
And go airborne, but maybe an increased police presence would help on Oakwood Road, I'm not sure if that's going to help or not, but how would we know as residents that this development could come back?
If there was another development planned for that site, the residents would be notified by mail, everyone within six hundred feet of the border of that would be notified.
I think...
In addition, it's posted, physically posted on the property, and you would also find it on our website.
So how is, I don't mean to interrupt Dennis, but...
But you have to come up to the microphone, though.
Oh, how, how is that parcel of land that was being proposed for, I don't know whether that was retail space or what they were proposing. When it came to zoning, zoning declined to requests, how is that property currently zoned?
It's...
Commercial.
Commercial, so what, what variance did that?
They, two variances. One, they wanted to encroach, there's a required buffer between that commercial site and the adjacent residential property, and they wanted to narrow that down so that it was like eight and a half feet. The township spoke in opposition to that. And then in addition to that, there's a requirement on Route nineteen that all properties be interconnected, so that there not be just one entrance to that, but there be an entrance up above where...
To Med Express.
Where the Med Express is.
Yeah.
And they were looking to be able to have just a single entrance, and the township spoke in opposition.
So that variance was declined?
Yes.
By the township.
And speaking of that corner, when you pull off of Route nineteen, north or south onto Old Oak, where there's a really nasty curb there that, we just moved there a year ago, and our daughter took her, took the front of her car out, and there's a lot of damage, and we were standing there trying to get things situated, I was astounded at the numbers of passersby who had the same issue with that curb, so I called. I have an insurance background, and it's where my brain goes, and from the liability associated with those types of things. So when I contacted the township and asked them about that curb, they, I think they just came out and put those little dial rods that are neon-colored to mark that curb, but I was told that that curb cannot be repaired or removed so that we can eliminate those types of incidents on that, on that curb. I think everybody knows my name when you pull off nineteen. Right, and I mean, we come from, we come to this, our family, we've just been here for a year, we've lived in like eight different townships, and been to meetings inside those townships, and I'm here to tell you that out in your neighboring townships where we came from, you guys are it. You're, you're the awesome township.
I was going to say, it is, please clarify.
No, you're it, you're, you're, you do well, you're, you're top priority, and it was the common denominator with these gentlemen who spoke about the towers, with what this young lady said about when there's trouble weather-wise, or people are going to be in trouble. We live at the corner of Alexander and Oakwood, and we were digging out in the front yard a couple Saturdays ago, and there must have been fifteen or twenty cop cars, state police as well, who even pulled into the driveway, and they were chasing three bad guys, and we had them on camera, and they, these guys were like floundering, they, they didn't know where to go, what to do, they were talking to people who were outside, did you see a guy, which way did he go? It was a little bit frightening, and it was, again, the denominator there was safety, safety for all of your residents in this township. Trick-or-treaters last year, there's no lights on the road, I get it, so I made notes in my trick-or-treat log that I'm going to put lights on my driveway so that the kids can bypass this intersection that you're speaking of, Dennis, where there's only a stop sign coming off of Alexander onto Oakwood. And I don't even know, with my insurance background, if a stop sign's going to do it. People fly through them, when they do stop at them, and then they accelerate, they go like Son of a Gun whenever they hit their accelerator. So stop signs, I don't think, might be the right answer, but I was talking to another neighbor who has family that lives in Upper St. Clair, and they list, they have a couple of signs that say you're being watched, there's cameras, and it seems to really work, there really are cameras, and passersby who are driving are being watched, and their driving habits, and I guess there are tickets and citations that come from those cameras. Again, common denominator, safety. It's good to know that there was a zoning issue where that did not get approved, but it looks like it's going to hover. I'm getting feeling that whoever that...
I don't know what the property is going to do.
Okay, so...
This is probably the fourth or fifth.
Yes.
It's a difficult property. Developer.
Yeah, it's a very difficult property.
Yeah, and I guess the guy who lives right next to there will have a problem, because you're saying they want it eight and a half feet. I was trying to put a garage up, and I have to be fifteen feet from the center of the road, or sixteen feet from the right-of-way, and I have drains back there, and I have all these restrictions, which I'm all about, restrictions and following the rules, and those rules are put in place for all the right reasons, to keep everybody safe, and your documentation about the weather-related incidents, you know, you need something so you can contact all these people, and like a, like a phone chain for schools, even McGuffey down the middle of nowhere has a phone chain. Even McGuffey, down the middle of nowhere, has a phone chain.
Did you write your name down?
On here? Not yet. Would you like me to do that?
Because you spoke.
Paul, can we have Mr. Modjoe look at whether or not a stop sign was awarded there?
Yes.
I never realized there wasn't.
There's a lot of traffic on that road.
We'll, we'll look into it.
And people pass each other. They, they go around somebody in a 25 miles an hour. I'm like, really?
I talked to an officer there one night. He stopped somebody, wrote him up a ticket, okay? And the officer, I asked if they could do something about patrolling. They, they go down past our house at 40, 45, 50 miles an hour. They don't care. And then, you need to put, install a stop sign on, on Old Oak. That should be done.
Oakwood, Oakwood.
Oakwood, our, yeah, our, our road.
And that would be a four-way stop, right?
Alexander's time is on theirs, but there's very little traffic on that road.
People fly through there.
But they hit that speed bump flying sometimes. And I've seen two or three people get passed off right after they go off of that speed bump, and they fly down the road.
Yeah.
They go past our house.
So, I think council gets it.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna look into it. And like, and that or since, since South Point went in down there, the traffic has tripled.
Yeah.
And then, is there any way that the township would approve or contemplate approving some type of a sign that would say local traffic only? Or is that, you don't want that because you want to use that as a throughway?
That's not an enforceable sign.
Yes.
Pardon?
That's not an enforceable sign.
Yeah. I guess I'm, I, I weighed a, when it says, don't do, of course, when I took, my driver says there was a state officer in the car, and that freaked me out.
Paul, I'm looking at the straight view on this. I don't see.
Okay, we're, we're good?
Yes.
Yeah, I hope nobody puts a stop sign. I really.
Looking at this. All right. So, so any other audience comments?
Real quick on that. So, I'm looking at this.
I want to say there's a stop sign in Stratford, Oakwood.
All right, hold on, Gary.
Okay. Don't worry about it.
No? He could. All right, any other audience comments on non-agenda items? All right, very good. So, moving on, first new business, award a contract for the Peters Township, I'm sorry, Peterswood Park Baseball Field Improvement Project. Mr. Lauer.
The 2024 Peterswood Park budget includes an appropriation of $1,300,000 for baseball field improvements in Peterswood Park. As discussed in our budget works, often described in the budget document, this project included the replacement of the existing dugouts, press boxes, and lightings on Field One and Field Two in Peterswood Park, as well as the installation of artificial turf on Field Two. In addition, the project included the installation of LED sports lighting. So, the, late last fall, the township awarded a contract to do the sports lighting, and that project has been completed at a cost of approximately $363,000, leaving a balance of approximately $937,000 for the remainder of the project. The project was bid in such a way to afford council two options. It became apparent to us that, that we were not going to be able to do everything that was described in the budget for, for the amount that had been appropriated. So, what we did was, as a base bid, complete significant improvements on Field, Field Two. That's the Little League field. And while staying within, within the budget, alternatively, we bid an alternate that, that included the completion of significant improvements on Field One and Field Two as described in the budget. On May 3rd, the township opened bids for the ballfield improvement project. The low bid was raffle construction. Their base bid for Field Two was $840,070. Their bid for the alternate on Field One was $770,780. If you want, I can have Mark go through in detail what's involved in each of those.
I have a question, Mr. Lauer. What I'm looking at on this computer says, base bid Field One, $840,000. Managers report says, base bid Field Two, $840,000.
That's right.
Which one's right?
Field Two, $840,000.
So, this is wrong, then, that's in here that I'm looking at.
It's, it's. Where are you looking at?
I'm looking at the, the thing on, on the computer.
Which page?
Seventeen.
I don't know. I don't have that in front of me.
Isn't that the same number?
Includes Field, for Field Two is $840,000. The alternate bid for Field One is an additional $770,780. And if you, like I said, if you want, Mark can go through and provide you details about what each of these are. Why don't you do that, Mark?
Well, I'm looking at here.
That's right, that's right. What's wrong now?
So, for Field Two, a small field, I'll call it, the Pony League field, that includes demolition of the existing dugouts and press boxes, construction of a dugout with a storage building on the side of it, construction of just a conventional dugout. New press box. It also includes drainage improvements. There's a lot of drainage issues currently on this field. A lot of the infield mix ends up down at the concession stand because of all the drainage off of the hillside. So, we have some supplemental drains there. We're going to create some low points behind the, the press box and the dugouts, connect it into a trunk sewer that goes out and connects to the inlet by the concession stand. All that. Pointer's not working anymore, but anyways. All the buildings get connected with new sidewalk. There'll be a new backstop. New backstop. A new electric line to the press box. The existing electric line is old. We don't even know when it was installed. So, we'd like to take care of that while it's here. Plus, we're going to run into it with the storm sewer system under the turf field, so it'll have to be replaced anyway. So, new electrical service. Then, of course, artificial turf on the infield, which will consist of, there's a perimeter concrete curb that has to go in with all artificial fields. That's where the turf gets anchored to, so that's a big ticket item there as far as the site work goes. Then, there's subsurface drainage panels underneath the turf field. It's connected to like a perimeter drainage system that serves as the stormwater management for all the impervious area that we're creating. That all gets connected. So, there's a couple ancillary site items. We're shifting this field. The, the distance between these two fields is very narrow currently, so we're shifting this field like 10 feet, I'll say, to the right of the plan sheet here. So, some of the outfield fence will need to be kind of reoriented to keep a reasonable distance there for, for the outfield fence. Probably a couple ancillary site items I'm missing. But that, that's the big description there of, of the work on Field Two, which, as Paul said, that's all encompassed in the base bid. That's $840,000 for that work.
And so, if you were to do just this project, you would be within the $1,300,000 that was budgeted this year?
Even if we had the additional bid one, it would still be in it, right?
No, you would be about.
Well.
Go ahead.
Additional bid one was the master bid on Paul.
Oh.
So, that is correct, Frank.
It would be roughly the 1.3, it would be a little bit more than that.
But the only thing is with the batting cage, the batting cage was not part of the project that was funded through the R cap money. The reason that alternate was put in there is the baseball association asked us to get a price on that in case they wanted to do that on their own. And we've been told that they now do not want to do that as part of this project.
Okay.
So, Field One, the big field, as part of this bid, includes demolition of the existing buildings, construction of a new press box, a new dugout with storage, a new standard dugout, all connected with concrete walkway, a new, I'll call it a backstop, but it's really a, you've probably seen them at some of the more sophisticated fields. They have like a block wall with high netting on it, you know? It, it looks, it's just more substantial than your existing, or your typical Pittsburgh backstop. Then, there'll be a perimeter curb on the, like the infield side only because we, we never intended to turf this field. But what we did intend to do was set the field up to turf it in the future. So, I don't know how many of council have actually played on this field, but there's a, there's a grading problem with it. There's a giant lip between the, where the infield falls off into the outfield. We wanted to correct that with this. So, we kind of picked a point in the middle of the outfield and started grading backwards into here. And that's what kind of set the elevation of where these buildings will need to sit to make sure that if you do want to turf the field in the future, the first thing you have to get right is the grading. So, we wanted to make sure that that was graded properly for the future. So, that's a big portion of this, is regrading the field in order to cite these buildings properly, in order to set that curb at the elevation it needs to be to turf it in the future. And then, once the field's all graded, part of this bid includes a new natural infield, which will be like a sod infield with, with dirt baselines. And then, have to re-sod part of the outfield just to tie it into the existing outfield. So, all, all of that work, there's no drainage work under the field on this one because we, we wouldn't include that until it was actually turfed. All that work is $770,000, and that's, that's additional bid two.
So, if you were to award both of these, the total cost of this would be $1,610,000. And, you know, normally, council is pretty keen on staying within the amount of money that's been, been appropriated. But in this particular case, it's going to be my recommendation, and I think it's Mr. Brooks's recommendation that we do the additional work on Field One. There is nothing in our park system that is so far out of place as the press box and dugouts on both of these fields. And where, one of the things I, I tell you inside of the manager's report that this will take away money from the Rowing Hills Park Phase Two project. But I think it's important that we take care of the facilities that we have first before we start adding facilities. And, and I think replacing this makes a whole lot of sense, so.
I certainly agree.
I don't agree. I think we should do the one project with the $650,000 match. To do stuff piecemeal like that and spend extra money. We could get another grant next year and do those improvements. The little field is the one that needs the most of the work because those kids can't play when it rains.
Well, but if you do, if you do the big field, then big kids and little kids can play.
Yeah, but nobody, nobody hardly uses that big field.
But not if you turf that field, huh?
I don't think, that doesn't include turfing two or one.
That does not include.
Does a bid, doesn't, does that cover turfing two or one?
No, because.
And it doesn't, does it, does it do two, turfing two?
Yes, yes.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, let's just start up doing it halfway. Let's just do one, get more grant money, and do another.
And not to make this more complicated than it already is. At the last meeting, we explained to you that the, the office of the budget has questioned how we have gone about acquiring the lights on the field. They have clarified for us that they will not allow that to be part of the grant. So, if, they've given us an out, but what, what it will not allow you to do is, is to receive the entire $650,000. But if you were to award this, you would, you would get the entire $650,000 to apply to both projects.
If you award.
Project has to be over $1 million. So, so right now, they're telling us your project's 800 and some thousand, and they will give us half of that.
So, they're not going to count the 390-some thousand or whatever that we already did on the lighting?
They will not allow us to use that.
And how come you didn't tell us that when we were bidding this?
Because I didn't know that when we bid this.
Well, I mean, shouldn't you know that? Once it's covered, it's covered by the grant.
I would have assumed, as we argued with the state of Pennsylvania, that the purchasing procedure that is not only provided for, but is promoted by the Pennsylvania Department of General Services for all municipalities would have been allowed on this project. And it is. But what they're telling you is that if you get a CoStarz contract, you have to have three separate, three separate CoStars. And you can't do that on Musco Lighting because Musco doesn't have a distributor system. And our lights out in our, for our sports facilities are Musco Lights, and they have a unique control system. So, even if we would have known that, I would have been back to you, suggesting to you that the appropriate thing is to put a lighting system up that in fact is one that, that we use.
So, now, we're going to have to eat that and then eat another 200 or 300,000 on top of that, is what you're saying, to do both projects?
I don't like the word eat, but.
Well, that'll come out of Rowing Hills Phase Two, right?
It's, yeah. You know, one of the things that's in, that's in the manager's report is, and that we talked about during the budget workshops, is that there's, there is money set aside for this project, for the splash pad, and for, for the Rowing Hills Phase Two project. And it's a fixed amount of money. So, if money is spent here, it's not available somewhere else.
What all is included in the Phase Two, again?
Phase Two at the park right now is extending the, the parking lot down, increasing the amount of parking at the top of the hill. There are two outdoor basketball courts. There are pickleball courts. There's deck hockey, and there's a dog park.
And what are we looking at having to give up, then?
I don't know that yet because we don't have, we don't have estimates on, on those. But you're not going to, it's going to be, even with the money that's available, and again, we don't know how much is available until you bid the splash pad.
I would think that the splash pad actually serves the least number of, of residents.
It's the one you have $3,200,000 worth of grants for.
Which we have to match, right?
Yes.
I mean, my opinion, we kill that and put it into the fields, the baseball fields, and it'll serve us more of our residents than the splash pad. We'll get more use out of those.
Any other discussion?
I just have one question about the one baseball field. Not that one, the PW Two. The way that the. The press box is set up, it's like sideways. If you're moving it.
10 feet.
If you're moving it 10 feet, are you going to angle it at all just to?
It's, it's, it's still 90 degrees to the field. There's really not any room to, we'd have to push the field so far to the right that I think that you'd lose too much outfield there. We, we did look at that, though. The architect looked at that to try to cite that building a little better, and this is about as good as he could come up with.
And then, the other thing was on PW One, and probably PW Two. The grass, the real grass that'll stay, could you look to filling, fill in big holes? Because PW One has really big ones, and I had a center fielder, and I saw him almost break his leg because of so many divots.
That wouldn't be part of his construction contract. That's more a maintenance-type thing.
Okay. Just as a safety precaution for the kids out there.
So, Paul. Some of the kids that create those holes, too, though.
They might.
Having been in outfield.
Maybe I should do it.
Mr. Lauer, you said in this report here, if council desires to install a synthetic infield in Field One, that you don't, you, you'd only recommend doing the, the base bid. Correct?
If you intend to do that in the very near future as a project, it seems to me that what makes more sense in attempting to coordinate this is to do that infield in all these buildings at the same time. If, and, and the reason I say that, beyond the fact of the attempting to coordinate that, given that this contractor would be way ahead, I think you would end up losing another season out there if you, if you do these as two separate projects. The thing that I will say is that in the, the way this is designed, it was designed to accommodate this as a future date. So, you know, we were talking about what is it that you lose if in fact you go ahead and do this now and then at some future date tear it out? You'd have to do this grading. These buildings have to be. These buildings have to be set at these elevations to be able to accommodate the, this infield or the turf infield. The other thing that you would lose is the sod on the infield. So I don't know that you're losing a ton in terms of having an additional cost for the future.
I mean, I think we need turf on the big field. I think that would be used so much more. You know, you could play any game there. They have different settings for the bases. You could play Little League game there, you could play Legion ball there. So to me, that should have been turfed, and then the other one, you know, taken care of afterwards. I mean, that's my opinion with that. I don't like doing things piecemeal, so I am not in favor of doing everything and just not the turf. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me. And then doing the turf, the other day, I said, I think we just do it all, or, and I know that's not in this bid, but I wish it would have been.
So you want to reject it and put it out the bid here?
Well, the problem is then we'll lose a season with that. So, and I would have to assume that the cost would be less doing it all at once.
But it'll be a year down the road, and it'll be more.
More. So, I don't know, Dave, if you have any thoughts on this, since you've been kind of...
My biggest thing...
Dave, you have to come up to the microphone.
My biggest thing from seeing the last couple of weeks with the high school playoffs that were there, the way that the dugouts are situated on Field One, they need pushed away from home plate. There's going to be some issues there from an umpire, player, or coach standpoint. I think that's why my recommendation was to, if anything, get these dugouts and press box, press box and backstop done on Field One with the curbing, so in the future, we can go to turf easily that way. It is an eyesore coming into the park. As you pull into the park, it's a beautiful park. You look to the right, and you have those, the press box, probably built in the 90s. And it's rough, so...
Yeah, before that.
Yeah, before that, okay. So I think it's something that needs to be uniformed with the look of Field Two, with the buildings. I think that's why we can get away with playing with the natural service. I played college baseball at a high level on natural grass and infield. Turf is a great answer for playing multiple levels on there. I think we're going to get a lot more games on Field Two than what we've had in the past with having the turf there. And in the future, if we do add turf to Field One, it's going to be a huge improvement. But from a standpoint, budget standpoint, looking at the large picture for what's going to happen at Rolling Hills Phase Two, from a Parkson Breck standpoint overall, I think we really need to think about that site as much as we're thinking about these fields. So that's why I recommended to do Field One, backstop, press box, and dugouts at this point with it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Any other comments?
My name is John Snyder, 327 Buckingham Drive. I'm the president of the Peters Township Baseball Association. I was here to kind of, one is to help the project along, not looking to delay it at all. But I'm also here to try to answer some questions that might be able to be helpful for people that aren't in the baseball world, you know, because I'm living this right now, such as when you would ask the question of how does that help the kids in the community? As of last year, I started working with Pony to work with Pony League Bronco World Series. We became a satellite site, the winner goes to Texas. In doing that, I was looking to work more with Pony and making more sites here available. Right now, they alternate sites in Mount Lebanon for their Pony League 14-year World Series. They would be interested in bringing that to Peters, because it's in Washington County. Advantage to that is that then we become, where we can hold a tournament here televised, the winner of that tournament then goes to the World Series in Washington, PA. By turfing that field, we can put more base boxes, just like David alluded to with PW Two. We can play Mustang games that are played on PW Three and Four. We can play them under the lights, we can put different base boxes, so that when there are rainouts, we can utilize and move the fields around. Same thing we could do with PW One, so that if we had to transfer because of rainouts, we could transfer a Bronco game over to, from PW Two to PW One and bring Mustangs of PW Three and PW Four down to PW Two to play. It would help utilize and make it more effective, us playing on those fields. But again, like, I'm not here to try to delay a project, just try to make the fields better. I mean, I look at some of the fields we play on, like in Upper St. Clair or Mount Lebanon. You know, I think we were talking Woodland Hills, Gateway, a lot of these areas have those turf fields. And, you know, how can we look to do it? I mean, a year ago, when this project had started, I'd been asked to come on board and help plan, and I had actually written a letter, I believe that I had sent, that, you know, we as PTBA would run fundraisers to raise money. I mean, we raised $17,000 last year off the cuff of just running a fundraiser. You know, if we need to run other fundraisers to help fund this project, I just didn't know where to write the check as of yet. So, you know, we're, as an association, looking to help, you know, do more tournaments, and to be able to do that, to raise money, to help pay these fields. So it's not just asking you, please give us fields. Like, we think that, you know, we should somehow provide money back to actually pay for some of these fields, you know, and help the township provide good fields for us to play on. And if there's any other questions about how we can better utilize these fields or what we can do, we even, I even started two years ago putting on a live document, so it makes it easier for teams to be able to transfer fields or know where games are played, so that we can help utilize the schedule and put more games in, you know, for the kids to play. Right now, in the organization, we have over 500 kids in the baseball association, and 260 of those play travel, which is all year round. So there's a lot of kids playing baseball. You know, being able to utilize those fields and not have rainouts or delayed games or loss of tournament revenue and stuff like that would greatly help. I also, in doing this, when I hear that we're looking to just regrass and regrade, I know that it was, we just also don't want to be spending money, because that field was in such horrible shape over the last year. The infield was horrible. Anyone who played there, they couldn't even play games. So then we took $22,000 and just had that regraded. I just wrote the check two months ago. To have that regraded, you know, it's in dirt, so it'd actually be playable. The batting cage, to show you what we're trying to do with these fields as well, but the batting cage came in at 97,000. We actually had that bid out, and it's only 57,000 for us to do it. So as to pay for that in the 97, we decided to take that out and do that ourselves, and we're going to be building that. A mastodon cage with concrete and everything in there. So it's not going to, PW Two project won't go without a batting cage, because part of that's going to be leveled down, and that cage is going to be destroyed, so we're going to actually have and pay to put one up as well, too. So I just want you guys to know that we're trying to do everything we can to help fund these projects and make this place look nice, you know, through PTBA, and...
Thank you.
Appreciate it, John.
I'd like to propose a motion that we award base bid, which would be for Field Two, and alternate Number Two, which is for the improvements to Field One for $1,610,850. I'm just going to die for lack of a second.
A second.
Have a motion in a second?
I really want to know where the money's coming from specifically before I'd be on board with this. That's my only concern.
If the question is where's the money coming from, it's going to be coming out of the bond issue.
I know it's coming out of the...
But if the question is, what is it we aren't going to do in Rolling Hills Phase Two?
Right.
There's no way to answer that, and to answer that any time in the near future, because that project's not far enough along to be able to...
If we do this, are we getting the 650,000 from the state?
Yes, you are.
So our actual cost is whatever that difference is.
700.
It's over a million, that's on the...
Yeah. No motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed? 6-1, Mr. Lowery. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, award of contract for community emergency notification system.
So the recent weather events have illustrated the need for Peters Township to be able to directly communicate with residents and businesses before, during, and after emergencies. And what is needed and is being proposed is an emergency notification system that not only alerts individuals to an emergency, but also provides useful information. The product that we have been looking at is, has been developed by a company by the name of OnSolve, and their product is branded as Code Red. So what Code Red allows you to do is to send out notices that can be sent to the entire community or to areas that have been identified, collections of streets, you know, people within a certain distance of an emergency. So to give council an idea of what is available and the kind of notices, these are all notices that were sent out on May 20th and May 21st by various communities who subscribe to this. In fact, if people are interested, you can actually download the Code Red app, and you can receive these notifications. Now, one of the things about the organization is that their notification system is tied into the National Weather Service. Let me get back here. So when the National Weather Service sends out a notice, and that notice would automatically be available to anybody who is in that, in that community. So, you know, this is a flash flood warning that the National Weather Service sent out. You know, one of the comments was about the lack of notice for the tornado that hit down. This does not solve that problem. You know, we did go back, actually Chief McDonough went back and engaged in a discussion with the National Weather Service. And if you look at the area they identified in their tornado warning, the area that was hit was just outside of it. And that's why there was no notice that showed up on people's phones. And, you know, what the National Weather Service tells us, and I can believe this, particularly on these tornado events that are smaller in nature, is that they don't always get it right, and they don't always identify the area. So I don't want to mislead you that if we had a tornado and you had this service, unless the National Weather Service identifies it, we're not going to pick it up either. The thing that we did see afterwards is, in helping those residents deal with the damage, it was by chance that the head of the homeowners association was there, and before the fire department left, they notified everybody through an email blast that they were able to do to their members, to get all the trees out to the road. And that allowed the public works department to come out and chip all those. Later on, what was identified is that there was, for at least some people, a need to deal with furniture and awnings and things that were damaged. And right now, the only way to notify everybody in that affected area was to go door to door. And to, again, to the fire department's credit, they went to 150 homes and let them know if they brought their, that damaged material to the curb, that the public works department would take care of that. We got a lot of positive comments back from people, were very appreciative of what the fire department and the public works department was able to do for them. It would have been a whole lot easier if we could have been able to send out those same kind of notices in some automated fashion, so. I'd ask both chiefs that come here tonight to discuss this with you, in terms of what they would like to see happen, so.
I'd like to echo his comments that it's not going to solve the lack of warning from the National Weather Service, but what it would allow us to do is, you know, over the last year, we had to evacuate groups of houses for hazardous material releases, one of them being the gas line that was struck during the roundabout incident. We had to evacuate about 500-yard radius from that area. We've done drills, one with TC Energy, trying to help better alert our residents. This was an item that came up, the police event that happened on May 18th. Myself and the fire department tried contacting Washington County Department of Public Safety to have them put out an alert in a targeted geographical area in their neighborhood to let them know to shelter in place. The person that used to do that has resigned from Washington County, and that hasn't been redelegated yet, so that was not able to be done. This would allow us to take that control into our own hands. This is the same system that Pima uses for their iPaws alerts, and that's the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System. It will also echo, and hopefully someday, allow local municipality in Pennsylvania, we're one of the only states that does not allow local municipality to do it, but we can go up to the Pima level to issue emergency alerts wirelessly on cell phone, on radio and television, and weather radio as well.
So along those lines, the message, one of the messages that was up on 520 was that it was an evacuation order for a fire in Hamilton City, California. The other thing that I know would be of interest to the, to the police chief is, you have orders like this where you have missing children, and it's a way to get a notice out to people.
Missing and endangered people as well, elderly people, sometimes with dementia that we go looking for two or three times a year. Not the same specific person, but these type of events happen frequently. We can geo-target specific areas to have those residents be on the lookout. I was able to talk to Mount Lebanon's public information officer, they use this system as well, and they really pushed and stressed the need for training your residents. And what would come after this is a massive blitz that would coordinate between police, fire, every township department to try to get the word out there to get people to sign up for this. But in lieu of signing up for it, they have a shared system where they share with the PA American Water Company. And if your phone number's registered through PA American Water, we would gather that as an emergency-only contact. So Mount Lebanon Township had this instance where they needed to put information out. Not many people had signed up yet, but they were able to use that call list from PA American Water and alert people to an emergency.
Sending their phones on. It's on 3:00 in the morning.
There were people called at 3:00 in the morning, and they were asked to be removed from that list. However, they were able to be talked back into being on the list. These alerts, emergency alerts realistically should probably not go out more than six times a year, unless we're having a really bad year.
That's kind of a concern for me, that, you know, there is so much stuff on the news about bad weather events, this and that, and so on and so forth, that, you know, we're reinventing the wheel to get people to sign up for something that they may never get a message from. It's depending on the time of day. I mean, I'm more of a, you know, thinking like a more of a director. You know, like, I thought we should bring the siren back.
Stop the siren.
Like the guy in the newspaper. I mean, that's, if you're sleeping and your friends are on one, you're going to hear that, and you're going to know. But I mean, how much stuff are you going to give them? We're going to spend $16,000 probably a year. You know, Code Red, we'll be in the red if we keep spending like we spend here.
No, that was for three years, right? The 16,000? Did I read that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the contract term is for, Con. We're not...
No, that is correct. It's a three-year contract.
So the total's 16,000?
That's correct.
I just don't think we're going to get a lot of utility out of it, but...
And we haven't quoted sirens, but what I know is they're not inexpensive either, and their maintenance costs are extremely high. They're kind of, I don't want to use the word archaic, because other townships have gone that route, North Franklin being one of them. I think it comes more from a staffing perspective. North Franklin doesn't have the personnel to be able to put out this alert if there's an emergency. So the 911 center, when instructed, is what gives the code to set their sirens off.
What is a siren?
Was the siren that was there at station two still there?
At our station two?
Yeah. So it's gone completely.
Was there ever one?
Yeah.
At two? No.
Was there?
I think Peterswood Park.
Peterswood Center Church.
Peterswood Center Church and overall.
Yeah, Locust. And the reason why they were eliminated, one, the volunteers or dispatches in a different way. The other thing was complaints from the neighborhoods. Because one of the things with those sirens is the only way to know that they work is to test them on a regular basis. And what, you got to use to test them weekly?
I can't remember back that far. But North Franklin, right now, tests them monthly. So I talked to some people that, over there, they test theirs monthly on the first Saturday at noon.
Oh, I know you guys use to test them weekly, and use to test them like 10 o'clock at night, because I remember when I was in elementary school hearing them once a week.
It's the best way to get it to go throughout the valleys.
Yeah.
Oh, and the siren off of Phillyville, down by Churchill too, I forgot that one.
What about?
It's Phillyville Sire, but we had access to it as well, shared.
Michael, we had a decade ago, I guess, a reverse 911 discussion of what that was going to be. Of course, that was all driven off of landlines at that point in time, as I would recall. If I heard you, I heard you, if I understood what you said, this would be most likely done as a transmission through our cell phones.
Yes, and landline. We would gain access, and Kyle, tell, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way Mount Lebanon explained to me was what we had demoed as well. PA American Water, we're all customers of it. My phone is registered through PA American Water. It's my cellphone for my account. So by default, my number is in the Code Red system. If we have the system and were to dispatch an emergency on that system, my phone would be one to ring if I was in that geo-targeted area. So yes, cell phones would be one of them.
But landlines would also be a potential source.
Yes.
Because you already heard me earlier tonight, so.
Yes, sir. Landlines, cell phones, whatever is in that system. And as a user, you can put what data you want to get out of that system as well. So if Mr. Arcuri has a concern that he doesn't want, you know, six alerts a day, like we were getting here, you can dial it down to the actual alerts. And you have the boy cried wolf syndrome sometimes as well. If you're sending an emergency alert out for every little thing, a traffic delay on 19, where I want to know about it, I don't need to be notified on an emergency basis. People can get deaf to it as well.
Yes. I mean, even if you look on the screen right now, the one is classified as an emergency notice, the other is a community notice. And so people can register if they want, on what level of service they would like to be able to receive notices.
And there is potential of cost savings further down the road as well, if this takes place of other things that we currently use. As we get into the nitty-gritty of it, right now, we're only asking for an emergency alert system with that. But it has other community messages as well that can be delivered through that.
I don't see a downside.
I thought for 5,000 years.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty good.
It's reasonable. I'm not saying it isn't. It's just, I just, I just think it's just throwing money away.
Is there anything that you could do, like on social media, for each site, like the police department site, the fire, and even like the municipal site, to send out notifications for very important events, and then have some sort of a day, you know, community safety day, where people can come in and bring their phones and have somebody help them put it on if they wanted to, and maybe that could be better cost-saving. I don't know. I mean.
We could do that, a community day.
Yeah.
And that was the plan as well. Mount Lebanon has little business cards that they've handed out at all of their events, anything public safety with police and fire, and a coordinated effort to say, this is what it is, sign up for it, this is what it is, sign up for it. Along the lines of social media, when we do have emergencies or alerts or stuff, we always do try to put it out on that. One thing that it is, it's not time-sensitive, and it takes a lot of time to create that. These have shortcut mobiles to where our units in the field will be able to pull this up, hopefully in a reasonable amount of time on a mobile device, and send something out expeditiously.
I will say on a separate note, I lived on Hedgeroe Drive for 15 years until two years ago, and most of my neighbors, ones that lost their roofs. And every single person has said, from the police to the fire, to the public works, this was an outstanding job you guys did. Like, they were blown away by the level of service, so.
The one thing we can't do is predict the weather. And that's where we fell short. But that's out of our control, and that's even out of the National Weather Service's control. And they had a pretty decent explanation with what happened, but we can control everything that happens after that emergency does happen. And the level of customer service I saw from our fire department, their police department, our public works department was something
It was excellent.
More than what I would see in other communities. We're proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, I make a motion that we award a contract to OnSolve for the Code Red Emergency Notification System in the amount of $16,491.
Second.
Motion, second, in favor.
Aye.
opposed. Seven-nothing, Mr. Lauer.
Next, Hamlet Jenner, authorize time extension agreement as requested by Cohen Markets.
Oh, they're asking for is an extension to what, November 8?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we grant the time extension to Cohen Markets until November 8, 2024.
Second.
Can you just clarify why they're requesting that extension?
Well, in part, they're requesting it because of the process they need to go through. They're looking at having to go to the zoning hearing board for variance. And so then, in addition to that, they got to get back to the planning commission. I don't think they're in a real hurry, because they don't want to start, they want to start construction, as we understand it, in conjunction with the intersection work starting in earnest up here. So it doesn't hurt the township to grant that extension, and so.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
My name's Mike Ranker. I live at 466 Thompsonville. I just, I was just coming down, I had a couple of questions about it as well. Why the, I'm not familiar in the proceedings, any of these for that matter, but it's particularly extensions and what's typically granted, and what seemed is, what the time, the original timeline means, if that's ever met, when it's not met, the exceptions, and why some, why an extension, to me, again, I don't understand, I haven't been involved in it, but why something twice the initial timeline would be granted?
The municipality's planning code requires that the township take action on any submittal within 90 days of the submittal. If the submittal's incomplete, and as a matter of case law, the township needs to provide reasonable extension so that, in fact, the applicant has a chance to be able to address the concern. So when this plan was looked at, one of the things that was determined, based upon what's being asked, is that they would require to appear in front of the zoning hearing board.
Sure.
That in and of itself makes it possible for them to be able to do this within the 90 days. In this particular case, I'm not quite sure what difference it makes whether they come in now or come in later. The question is, will the, will the plan eventually be in compliance with the township's ordinance?
So it's a completely different scenario than we had with Frobby Farms with.
Yes.
I guess, I just don't understand why we'd also skip, I mean, can't they come back? Like, if we gave them 90 more days?
Yeah.
They could just come back and ask for more, because otherwise, they could let this drag. And then we're down 217 days, and they're like, we need another 90 days. I mean, I think if you put their feet to the fire, it might be, get it done on time as opposed to giving them a blanket 217 days.
The council can do what it wants with that extension.
And that was my concern. That's ultimately why I came down here, is I'm inexorably linked to this project by the location of my house. And I'm busy. I just came from coaching my daughter's soccer game. I got a one-year-old at home that needed to go to bed, you know. I'd like to see this handled quickly, regardless of the outcome. They have an entire organization behind them. The meeting that you spoke about, the zoning meeting, is on the 18th, I believe, of June. So their initial July 5 deadline is definitely outside of that, the zoning hearing meeting. I'd like to see this handled quickly, again, regardless of their success or failure in accomplishing this project. I don't want to be a year and a half on dealing with this. So that was, that was my concern. Again, I understand that there are reasons why extensions would need to be granted. It just seemed excessive.
So the zoning hearing board meeting is actually beyond the original 90 days?
It's just before the 90 days, so they wouldn't have time to come back for the planning commission.
So depending on what the zoning hearing board decides, it may alter the plan that ends up in front of the planning permission. This is a commercial site plan, so it's not coming back to council. It's going to be handled at the planning commission.
So we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
What is the motion for?
To approve the request.
You had to grant that as was submitted.
Before I sit down, can I, are you guys able to manipulate the extension and say, we grant an extension, but it's 60 days past the initial deadline? Because I think that these deadlines are set so that it's handled expeditiously, and so that people aren't, that are wrapped up in this, aren't dealing with it for extreme amounts of time, right? I mean, are you guys, I don't know.
The answer to the question is, council can grant an extension of any length.
Of any length.
Really, the deadlines are really on council to act expeditiously, not so much the applicant.
Oh, wow.
Because they, so that, because ultimately, in this case, the applicant can withdraw and just refile tomorrow and start all over. But this seems like a lot of.
So we have a motion, was there a motion in the second?
Yes, sir, there is.
On the 216 days. That's what we're voting on?
That's what the motion is right now.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, seven-nothing, Mr. Lauer. Resolution, amend in Peter's township employee handbook?
Yes. We have undertaken a review of the handbook and are suggesting a couple of changes in the handbook. Currently, the handbook allows full-time employees to receive two weeks vacation after one year of employment. One of the things that we've been discovering as we, as, and we have been turning over, as you well know, lots of employees, we're running into more and more situation where people who are hiring in have already had plans for the upcoming year. And we're having to attempt to accommodate that on an individual basis. So what the, what the proposed amendment would do is to provide a week's vacation to new employees after 90 days on a pro-rata basis. So that if you were hired at the very beginning of the year, you would receive five days. If you were hired halfway through the year, you'd receive two days. But there would be some pattern by which you would receive vacation. The other thing is, there's a change in the language that deals with problem resolutions. The manual, the handbook as it exists now, has the personnel committee involved in any type and all types of appeals. And one of the things that we've discovered in this process is that the only appeals that have been coming to the personnel committee are simply requests for individuals for increases in pay. If you go to the code of ordinance, it actually describes the role of the personnel committee to hear appeals relating to suspensions and demotions and dismissals. And what we're suggesting is that the employee handbook be changed to have the personnel committee focus on that. The sick leave policy right now talks about getting doctors' excuses when somebody's off for three consecutive days. We haven't had a problem with this with administrative employees until recently. And one of the things that we'd like to do is to grant the manager the ability to request doctors' excuses when we see a pattern of sick leave use. And then finally, for separation of employment, and again, this is only a recent problem that we've had, where we've had people resign from here with two weeks' notice, take their two weeks' vacation, and not provide us any means of transition. And one of the things that we do is that when an employee leaves here, they receive a payout of their outstanding and accrued vacation, as well as personal days. And if you're retiring, it could be sick days. And what we're suggesting is that if you don't give us adequate notice and you don't help us with a transition, then we'd like to give the manager the authority to withhold those vacation and personal day payments, so.
Paul, is it hurting you? Like, so I can't, so you have two weeks for how many years?
You get, you get two weeks vacation for, after the first year, you get three weeks after five years, you get four weeks after 10. One of the things that this does, that I should have mentioned, is that it gives the manager the ability, and we've been doing this, I mean, we've been doing this for a long time, to accelerate people's on the vacation schedule when we're hiring people in the key positions, particularly when we have people who come to us with experience, so.
So you have the leeway to adjust, okay.
Any other discussion on handbook, employee handbook?
Do we have to approve that?
You have to approve the resolution to update the employee handbook.
It's not in the book, is it?
No, it's, I noticed that that's missing from here, the recommendation. It would be...
What is the resolution number it is?
I think it's resolution, I think this is the first resolution of the month, actually. It would be 50124.
I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I would have said the number, but I didn't get my pen this week.
Seven-nothing, Mr. Lauer.
It'll be forever known as that resolution.
Yes.
All right, payroll and bills?
Yeah, we had the payroll and bills prior to this evening's meeting, found everything to be in order, and that they'd be approved.
All right, second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Seven-nothing, Mr. Lauer. Correspondence email from Jeffrey Messerly, Mr. Lauer.
It's just a letter, thank you.
All right, anything in reports that anyone would like to bring up at this time?
What was the basis of the lawsuit against the township for the approval of the plan over there?
It's probably better handled in executive session, Mr. Smith can.
Under miscellaneous, Tom Chator?
I just wanted to make sure, you know, tentatively, this was scheduled for July 1st. And I just, before we go and run a bus, I just want to make sure that we're still on for that date. If there are things that you would like to see in town, if you can let me know what those are. Are we still on for that date?
Absolutely.
Do you know what time we're starting on?
I think we did it at 6:30 last time we were in.
Okay. Just send out a reminder, because I don't.
Well, you'll get it, yeah.
I forgot the school board meeting.
All right. Next, Miss Lee, say, dates for joint meeting, Peter's, National Planning Commission, zoning hearing board?
Yeah, we're suggesting that it would make sense to do that at the earliest July. We want to talk about proposed changes to the zoning ordinance that has to deal with the process by which plans are reviewed. But we also want to talk with both groups about what it is you'd like to see in the way of the RFP for the comprehensive plan. So I don't know whether you want to pick a date in July to do that, or you want to wait till August, but.
Wait till August.
Yeah, August.
Are we allowed to attend that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So it would have to be either the 5th or the 19th?
I'll tell you what, the next meeting of August. Yeah, I'll come up with dates for August.
Okay, thank you.
The one thing we wanted to let you know, and we had already informed council, but so that the public knows, the Frobby Farm property is sold. And as a result of that, the litigation against the township regarding approval, that plan has been withdrawn, so.
Good news. Subsequent plans, are they all gone?
From what we understand, the individuals who have purchased it have no intention of developing that property right now.
That's great.
Now that it's all cleared.
I did have a question. There's a Tuscany, there's some lines that are getting lower and lower by the road.
We've filed a complaint with the PUC and so has Mr. Hoskins at this point.
Okay. Is it, do you know if a fire truck can get into that neighborhood with where the lines are right now?
We haven't tried.
Okay.
So I don't know for sure.
Don't go real fast.
He can solve the problem quickly. We can take him out for you.
Right, right. It's all be a safety concern.
Yeah.
You know, our vehicles. Okay, thank you. Any other issues or comments?
I sent an email to Paul relative to several residents contacting me over the weekend and before of unkept properties. And it's actually gotten a lot worse in the last 90 days, I think, and I'm not so certain, you know.
There's one in Center Church.
How do we make our residents more proud of their property so that...
Bob, it's always a hard problem. On the ones that you sent to me, I forwarded those on to Mark and to Kristen who actually handles those. Each of those have received letters from the township. But I, it's not an excuse, but it's been worse this spring because of the amount of rain that we've had. And the people that we have problems with, it's been exacerbated by that fact. The ones that I have no explanation for is what you see down here at Olson's Crossroads, where you have the drugstore with, you know, all that landscaping just overgrown with weeds. Again, there's been a letter sent out to them with, and to take care of them.
Which drugstore is that?
Actually, both of them. The Walgreens.
Well, what happens if they don't, Bob, you send them a citation?
Yeah, we send them a citation, but, you know, for Walgreens, that means nothing.
Well, we also sometimes mow their property, build them.
Yeah, well, we'll do that on residential property, but we don't normally go into commercial properties to maintain them, so...
Maybe then we have to do the, make the fine every day.
We gotta convince the magistrate to do that, yes.
I'm sure the right person goes down there, it'll be done.
Well, I think the client could come in and make, at the time you're purchasing it, say, how about clean out the outside of your property or... But anyway, it's something that...
We have executive session?
Yes.
We want to talk about the Peters Creek.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Thank you. Why don't you explain this, Mark?
Okay. We received a letter very late in the day on Friday. I talked to the Peters Creek sanitary authority manager, Rick Kovak, and, you know, we sent them a list of the streets that we wanted to resurface this year, just to make sure that if they have any issues that they need to take care of, that they get addressed before we pave. They did identify on Springdale Road between, I guess it would be Sienna, no, it's not Sienna Trail, it's Farm View, between Farm View and Dagmar. Here, I have this in front of me, what am I doing? So this is Farm View, this is that private street Dagmar, here's the township line kind of down here. We are resurfacing this whole section of Springdale Road. They have five manholes, they're right in smack in the middle of the cartway of the road on this section between Farm View and Dagmar. They looked at those manholes, there's some repairs that they would like to make to the top sections of those manholes before we go in and pave it. It will require kind of saw cutting the asphalt, removing the casting off of the top of the manhole, making repairs, putting it back on. It's kind of extensive, there's five of them here, and their fear is that since they're right in the middle of the road, it's going to be almost impossible to maintain a lane of traffic while they do this work. So they wrote us a letter requesting to close this road to through traffic. They would obviously let the local traffic that lived here, you know, to their homes. But we wanted to bring it to council to see if you had an opinion on it. I guess, speaking just personally, I don't really have a problem with the request as long as that we condition it on...
How long, how long is it gonna take?
I, they haven't stated that yet, I'm gonna say two weeks. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's a day per manhole, and you gotta factor in weather delays too, so, I mean, on the days that it would rain, they would obviously open up the road, and it would be open at night too. This is just during working hours, I forgot to say that. So when their crews are on the road or their contractors on the road, they would shut it down here and shut it down at, well, probably Breeze Wood. But they haven't provided us with a detour plan or any details with respect to the timeframe and stuff like that, so...
Better.
Yes.
How are we gonna get that?
You can do it in one week in August, I'm on vacation.
Well, I guess the...
It's a week, you're coming back.
The good thing is that it would occur after school is out, so it wouldn't affect buses. We did tell them that, you know, the one thing that we can't have is it affect our contractor's schedule too, our resurfacing contractor. So we spoke with Mealy, and Mealy, our contractor for this year, and asked them to do this road last, which they've agreed to do, but, you know, if I had to guess right now, I would think that Mealy would be here mid to late July to mill and resurface the road. So we told the authority, you know, July 15 is pretty much your drop dead date.
The way the authorities described this is that it's like a 10-foot square around each of these manholes they're talking about. So there's no way, given that they're sitting in the middle of the road, to pass traffic around them while they've got it open.
Yeah.
And you need to do it before you pave it, so...
Yes.
Ideally, you would do it before you pave it.
You don't want to do it next year.
Right.
All right, any other good news?
I just have one thing on the topic of traffic, or, well, construction. On Mount Lane, there's roadwork being done, the road's closed, and they have no signs, like having anybody, you know, no warning signs. So you come either way and you have no idea until you come upon it, just FYI.
Okay, I'll look into that, but I've been in contact with our right-of-way inspector out there, and I was under the impression that it was signed.
It says roadwork, not road closed.
Okay.
Be nice to them.
All right. Meeting adjourned.